I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is January 7th, 2013, at 7:15 PM. The regular meeting of the Greensboro Council is called. At this time, request all cell phones, pagers, any other electronic devices to be silenced, please. Throw call, please.
Blake.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
There.
Here.
Administering the regular meeting, December 3rd, council meeting. Have you seen any changes or amendments? There is an annual intent motion to accept them as being approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New year of business, first thing off, election of council president.
Mayor.
Sir.
I would like to see, it's this day, right, but I'd move that Carol B. be re-elected as president.
Second. Quite an honor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Designate newspaper, 2013, make a designate two, and I think it's pretty well standard. Greensboro Daily News, Weekly, Greensboro Times, and Daily News. We have those two, Daily Times, Greensboro Times, and Daily News.
Let's make it a formality, but let's do it. I would move that.
There you go.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And we have our annual contribution request dates. And normally, our council meeting is set on the, what, 3rd Monday of the month, which this year is Martin Luther King Day, 21st. So...
Do we have the information already?
Janet, we have, what, three or four requests, three. And we still will have the mainstream group or the EDC request.
Is there, is there anything, why do we have to do it in January?
We don't have to.
I mean, if that's the 3rd, I mean, I'm available to meet them, but it's...
I would like to see it be a separate meeting, though, because it takes such a long time.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't know, I mean, we don't need to meet on the 24th. I mean, it's not an objection to it, but it's holiday, so maybe...
What, to meet on the 28th?
28th was the main.
It's not, we can go to the 1st, the 1st of February, that's when it takes, or should we meet the 11th, or the 18th of February?
Terry, go ahead with the 28th.
Then we put down the 28th of February, to meet January. You want to do it same time, 7:00 PM, or whatever? It's 6:00, but 7:00 hasn't been advertised. Okay, moving, moving the motion.
That is a for your own meeting, then.
Yeah.
And then I'll add that?
Yes.
Is there actually a motion to end the next council meeting, January 28th, 7:00 PM?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed, January 28th, 7:00 PM, here at Council Chambers. Starting all business, many ordinance, 12-9, tell the salaries, part-time inspector, same for same side, ordinance 12-10. And we probably need to do second, third reading on those, I think we can do them both together. This was voted on first reading last month, and there wasn't any problem with it, so... Now there is a motion to vote, pass it on the second reading, so moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed, and it contains a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. Second.
For discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, both, same sign. Motion passes. Need a motion for third reading.
This is for both?
Yes.
Second.
For discussion. And it is the salary wages, the five dollar increase per visit, part-time inspector, who has been raised for several years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes on both ordinances, 2012-18, 2012-19. Next time, agenda is the council board appointment, is tabled on the board for the DCA. Is anyone to talk to, Mr. Grace?
Yes, I have, and he is willing, I'm interested to continue. The only question we had was, was it a two, or is it a two-year or four-year appointment? I couldn't answer for sure, because I thought it was two, but four, but he says a two-year appointment. Alright, that's what he thought.
Jerry, would you want to check, is two?
Okay, that's good, and you include that.
Okay.
I would nominate David Lees as the representative on the Board of Southern Appeals.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Mr. Lees. Also, we had a situation where regimens will be able to continue, and council, I've seen where you all discussed it, and have another candidate?
Make the nomination for Christie Miller to be on the Lilly Foundation Committee.
She has accepted that.
She has accepted it, yes. Pending or approved.
Just for clarification, is the Lilly's scholarship from the...
Right, thank you. You made a motion?
I made the motion, the second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. New business. With tax making value, we have four of fund, housing several million dollars. Evening, sir. Would you like to kind of introduce yourself? I missed you back there.
Alright. Council members, alright. I'm Mike, I'll scope the value. And just a few words, you know, the value wanted me to express their extreme appreciation for the cooperation that we've had with the city of Greensboro over the last 10, 15 years now. And just, you know, inside the values going, we, basically, the 2012 was a very good year for the industry, things were turning around. And over the next five years, for Greensboro, we have scheduled capital investments of possibly $62 million in the business. And improvements that we've had, totally got that plan. We're looking, next year, we can create new jobs, full-time jobs, by 200, 110, 120 employees. And just, as a whole, the job industry over the next four or five years, the, yeah, it's pretty good. Auto-silicon estates are estimated to grow 10, 10 to 17 percent. So, just in a nutshell, it looks pretty good over the next five, six years. This is, this is one of our bigger plants in the eastern United States. And again, we, I don't think we've been able to provide the operation that we received from the city of Greensburg, the mayor's office, and council. And again, thank you. If there are any questions regarding the abatements, you can ask my answer.
Any idea how many jobs that's going to create?
For these abatements here, 209.
209?
Yeah, it'll create, the capital investment on these abatements is 15.5 million in capital. Create 209 jobs, and that amounts to almost $12 million in salaries per year.
Great.
Yeah, rotating, rotating.
Yep, 400. Yes, we're rotating 106.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much, thanks for coming down here. State committee.
Comments?
I think we all came to an agreement that this is a good deal for Greensboro. We recommend that you make it go with some plans.
One thing we don't have is the years marked out. What was our recommendation, like, Terry?
Three of the abatements is a five-year, one six-year.
One is a six-year. Largest investment was six-years, correct?
Correct.
Six-years was 7.2. Rest of them are five-years. Reason is because the equipment will be utilized longer. We really think, my boys, it's going to be added in future, that kind of thing, I think is, I suggest we vote.
Well, you've got a, you've got a motion on the floor here.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, are there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you very much. Mr. Copeland, would you like to give us a quick summary here?
Yeah.
You know, the ballgame's really on.
What I mainly like to talk about is something that's come to my attention over the last couple of weeks, and that is that there may be a intention on the part of the city to match what the county is wanting to contribute to our revolving loan fund, which has been quite successful. Just a few numbers for you, before you look at the important numbers in the Alabama Notre Dame game. First, we have five loans right now that are out. They're all current with their payments. That would be High Point Orchard, Tower Tree Testing, Asher Trucking, W T R E Radio, and Mesco Manufacturing. Recently, we've had a new company locate in Westbury, and that is ECS Fasteners. They make, they manufacture fasteners for automotive upholstery and also manufacture pallets. By the end of 2013, there should be six to eight employees. He will be starting, that's Mr. Mike Conrad, he'll be starting within a couple of weeks. With his, well, within a couple of weeks, he expects to have received his machinery that he'll use in the production. The council of the county, county council, has provided a tax abatement for him. We are expecting to make a loan that would help his operation out of our revolving loan fund. That would make the sixth loan that we have, and with the job creation, anticipating his amount and the job creation from that, there would be a total of about $260,000 loaned out to those six companies. With about 43 jobs created, that comes to approximately $6,000 per job. And I was able to report this a little earlier to the Board of Works and mention to them that that is what the state of Indiana likes to see as an ideal for cost per job in their incentive packages that they provide. In this situation, we don't have to count on the state of Indiana, we've got some good homegrown jobs here. So, if something, if we can, if the C is able, the C fit, to make that $25,000 contribution that matches the county's $25,000 contribution, we will continue and hopefully be as successful as we've been with this revolving loan fund.
Got a question.
Sure.
So far, the EDC has used their own money towards these loans, correct?
Well, Mayor, this was money that came from the United States Department of Agriculture.
That's true, that's right.
The Rural Development Fund.
Yeah, about four years ago.
Right.
$200,000.
Yes.
And you made one final one year, year or so ago.
That's correct, and, and we have built some back because of the repayments.
And this money is paid back through ARA, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Does, they review it as well to determine if it's a fit loan, if you will? And the other thing is, EDC has a loan committee, loan review committee that has to approve it before it's approved. Then it goes to a board, correct?
That's correct. So essentially, there's three levels of approval on this. Has to go through ARA, that's why I'm looking for approval. It goes to our loan committee then, the ECD loan committee. And at, at that point, they make a recommendation to our board, up or down, on the loan. And the board votes, and that's the final, there's been some that have been turned down. They're not all approved, but we tend to take a little bit of a higher risk loan than a bank would. Sometimes we're in second position to a bank. So far, we've been very fortunate, in money loaned out being repaid and the jobs created through that.
One situation was somebody starting to get behind, and finally sold out, settled up, paid off. So, been good.
And that person repaid the principal of that loan, so we really lost some money through the revolving loan fund. It's been, it's been a model. We've been audited by the Rural Development, and they said that we've, we've done very good.
I was a little confused about the question and the answer. The money is paid back to EDC or to ARA?
I, it goes. They are the loan service. They make sure the amount paid back is correct, it's up to date, and they, that's a small fee. ARA actually works for a series of communities in South Central.
Yeah.
They do the amortization.
They do the amortization.
So then, and then they in turn send you the money into, so the fund is actually the fund that you control?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Do we not, this is kind of aside, I'm not trying to pour cold water in your project here. Don't we have a small revolving loan fund here in the city too? We have?
We do, but you know, that's had disappeared for years. And I found on the appropriations report, and we did spend $10,000 on that about three years ago here. And the chamber came to us for a $10,000 seed money, which in turn, we received about $70,000 out, but we got about five new stores to start. One of them being on Westman Street.
So I guess, aren't we, don't we have people paying back the loans that were made some years ago on a couple of those? Yeah, I thought we had.
That's it, is that ARA, they, 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 they don't pay us, and they're keeping the force, correct?
The loan program that we currently have funds held on that are, that have paid back in the city, they're not, there's, I think all the payments have been made on those revolving loans, they're over.
Yeah, they're over, been around a while, I know.
They're, they're definitely, there's not been any payments made since I've been here, in the past years.
Yeah, so...
There is the...
No, I, I have no objection to, it sounds like it's a reasonably sound program, a successful program, and I'm not sure where we're going to put the dollars from, editor, something like that. But I do think we need to have a recap on these other things, I know we have several of them out there. One time, I think, one of the two and nine places had it, I think...
That's been repaid?
Yeah, I, I agree, I'm not suggesting they're in arrears at all. Got that, everybody, I'm not.
Which paid off.
I'm not suggesting that. I just think that we need to know what the status of those funds are, where they are, and what, the history of that. So we have a sound record of that. And I don't know whether that's the way that we could use in this circumstance or not. But, I mean, if, you know, the way of, and I don't know how quickly you have to have this, these dollars, but I'm in favor of what you want to do, I'm not suggesting anybody is in arrears, I'm just wanting to get a clear record of what's happened in where it belongs.
There was one that this council made, in the past council made, about two years.
It was two or three years.
They had paid it off and invested more in, and spent a loan out of $10,000.
Right.
And so that should be coming back, and then we have one, it was done probably number six.
There's some from a long time ago too. I mean, I, I'm just going back from my history here, many years ago, although we've had that program around for a while. And that money that came through the city, that seems to have been loaned out on revolving loans.
Yeah, here, here's another fund too, from 1985, that money's still laying there.
Yeah, so if that money can be put and used through this, rather than some other, I don't have an objection to it, it's the same thing, but there may be some legitimate situations where we can, and then, what I'm also suggesting, we may need to find a way to utilize that in a similar way, maybe through EDC, maybe through some other ARA or something, but we are able to...
I will contact ARA tomorrow, because we have our annual meeting Wednesday at noon, and I'll call tomorrow, get the information, pick it up Wednesday. And then, this money here, we'll use what we have, accumulated, to return through to ARA, you know, to pay for this. But if we don't have enough money there, there is this EDLP.
That's okay.
This Form 885, that's been signed off, we can utilize that money for economic development, things like that. And we did use $10,000 of that about two, three years ago for main downtown projects. So what I would ask for would be the approval to use that money to make up the difference of the $25,000 that we'd had come up with, actually with the county, to take out the EDLP to make up the difference. We're taking a motion to do it in those terms, that we use EDLP money, which is a 1985 funding that is sitting there, and we have used since, but use that to make up the difference that ARA would have for us to use, make up the difference.
Question, so what if ARA doesn't have, all of them have $25,000 in EDLP?
Yes, EDLP.
There's enough, there's enough.
There's about, what, $37,000 in it?
EDLP is $70,000, two, no, seven, sorry, $70,237.80.
That's not combined with the other fund?
No, that's separate. There was a lower, an older revolving.
Yeah, it was a long time.
That's about $45,000, that's what's in it.
So, that's fine, I still would like us to have...
Sure, actually, I'll get reported of all revolving fund loans that were paid back, or each tomorrow, word is that.
I would move that we would use EDLP funds to create the match, actually, to make up the difference of what's already at our disposal, where we are. They are, they are, they are.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take the money and run now, are you, Mark?
No. Maybe promise to pray to God.
Our chief, Scott Justine. See, I like this presentation.
No action needed on this, I just wanted to make you aware during the board works meeting, I presented to them that we, again, this year, were able to receive funds from the Leonhaan Fund, the Leonhaan Fund Trust. We've been able to do this for about the last 40 years. We received $7,500 this year, and earmarked those funds to purchase a new thermal imaging camera, which is a camera that we can see, see through smoke, into rooms during fire situations and stuff. It's a important piece of equipment for us, and the board works allowed us to do that. So just wanted to bring that up to you. Just for your information, again, last month, Assistant Chief Enzweller announced his retirement. Rick Black should be going out here pretty soon on having some knee replacement done. So we are going to start the process to find the new assistant chief on that shift. So you might hear out about, oh, Florida departments, you know, we're not hiring anybody at this point, we're going to fill, we'll fill that position from the thin. Just wanted to let you know in case you heard that, that, you know, that's something that we really, really... One thing too, real quick, in the newspaper article that Knott did the other day, one of the things that we're real proud of is we did go for ISO rating this year, and we were able to improve from a five to a four, and also have a township from the man to an ABA. So we were excited about that, that was the goal we were shooting for, and we're proud of ourselves, again, as I said. Rick and the Water Company did a lot of improvements also, you know, the money we've spent on that, bought into that also. And PD, under the dispatch portion of it, PD and the dispatch portion of it, almost ordered a perfect score for them, so. So, um, working together, we were able to get these numbers approved. So, hopefully that acts as a conduit for Mark, when he's doing economic development stuff, that, you know, hopefully that can make a difference for the company to come to town, whatever.
Derek, would you like to give a report on the board works meeting?
I will.
Good job.
Mark Foster-Temper opened bids for, first of all, sand, uh, stone and gravel, and that bid was awarded to New Point Harris City. Opened bids for concrete, that was awarded to IMI. The fuel bids were open, there were two that bidded, that bid, and, uh, one bid was not filled out properly, the other bid had errors, so we rejected both bids, and had asked that he put those out for rebid. Uh, the kids' closets, they provide clothes for kindergarten through six, have asked for use of some space near the stage in the gym for clothing, and we granted that request. Scott Chastain talked to us and said everything that he just said to, to us, word for word. Uh, also, John Morton, a, uh, a fireman for twenty-one years, has announced that he will be retiring on April the sixteenth. And then we opened bids, in Gary Murray's absence, we opened bids for the new stoplight, which will go out on four twenty-one or Mid-North Michigan Road at the Honda entrance, and, uh, we had several bids, I believe, seven or eight? Seven, seven bids amounted, uh, in the amount from one hundred and seventy thousand, seven fifty-four, all the way down to one twenty-seven, six forty. We put both bids under advisement, and we'll meet, uh, within a week or two to finalize. Mark is going over those bids, making sure all the calculations are correct. That's it. I might also, excuse me, Mayor, I might also mention this traffic light is being paid for out of Honda Tith Funds. Is there anything else from the council?
I would, I don't know if we can or how we can about it, but, you know, last month we did change the crash orders. Some significant changes there. I'd like your city to, um, kind of get together some of the statement pieces that need to be made public, and I suppose, whether you, do that through an article, the paper, on the website, um, are we actually do some active sending out some information? I don't know what's the best way, but, um, it's effective March fifteenth, that's only two months out. I think we need to find a way to get that, get the public made aware of it.
Yeah, newspapers always been good working with us, and on those projects and those stories. And also, uh, we had the article, what our goals are for next year, or some of them. And we want to talk to the radio stations as well, and like the department has the opportunity to explain what their targets and goals are for next year, and that would be another thing. So, we will do that, and get everything down, and I'm sure Laura will decide to go.
Yeah, it's, there's, it's, uh, one thing with regard to the, we've made some changes that affect some, but there's a number of changes that also affect just ordinary households, you know, in terms of lending, the number of bags, encouraging employee segments.
It would be nice if it was put on the website.
We have, we have to do a website as well, as soon as we get everything documented, just to make it, to make it simple so people understand.
Right, exactly.
And, and not for tonight, like, this is a celebrity class. I know that we had, um, a company that, back in April, that gave us kind of an energy audit report. And then we had a company come in early summer, and it said they were going to give us another way that they thought we could make some savings with regards to some changes and so on. Look, I, we haven't heard anything back from them, I just, my question is, maybe you could, you could, the next meeting, give us what happened with all that, um, what the status is. I know that one of the things that they, that they talked about doing early on, that you had mentioned, you're going to try and finalize this year, is the water meter, water everything, so, I just, maybe next, in lieu of important things happening in a short while, I don't want to have a discussion now, if we report back.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Anything from, where's the council? How about the board heads?
Thank you very much for your...
We'll make it a short meeting. I better, anything for the audience? Hearing none, there, take a motion to adjourn. Thank you.